Good.
You'll be here in a minute.
Just promised this, Jay.
Thank you, Mark. All right, good morning, everyone. We're called to order this November 5th, 2018, Board of Supervisors meeting. As always, we begin with an invocation. And I want to please pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. A special prayer goes to the first responder, especially one lost yesterday in McGee, as well as those who are getting ready to prepare for the storm we have coming through this evening. We ask that you lift up those in our hearts and minds that your love and grace be with them during their difficult times. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Again, my apologies for our late start, but we are ready to roll and get moving. Public comments, we want to recognize Mr. Kenneth and Ms. Angie from Dean &amp; Dean. Y'all like come up and say something, or?
I will.
Please do.
Both of you.
Kenneth O'Brae, am I getting that right, Kenneth?
O'Brae.
O'Brae?
Yeah.
Is it with Dean &amp; Dean?
Right.
Yeah, come on out, so we see you both.
Man, I'm really here to introduce Angie Brewer, who joined our firm. She's a fellow Rankin County, as well as me, as our Director of Marketing. And we've done a lot of work for the Board in the past, and we just wanted to take this opportunity on Election Day to thank you guys for the sacrifices that y'all do to make Rankin County a better place to live. And we'd just like being a part of that, and we've done a lot of work with you guys in the past, and we'd love to have the chance to do it again in the future.
And we need to bill something, because both of them live in my district.
Right.
Working on something to bill.
Okay.
And I've got just a project in mind, too.
Just go ahead and put it out there.
Absolutely.
So, thank y'all.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Anyone else for public comments? If not, we'll move on into old business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th?
So.
Okay, it's just you two guys.
Yeah, you'll know what's, yeah, some of it will be easy.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Ms. Laura has an adjustment to the consent agenda, Ms. Laura?
Yes, I need to add one personnel rec for the Sheriff's Department, if y'all allow me to add it to the.
So, a motion to add this to the consent?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. So, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So, Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Ms. Fortenberry is not here, Ms. Laura, so you want to take her?
I sure will. This is the authority to reimburse Judy Fortenberry in the amount of $665.25 for lodging for her deputy clerks to attend training, as prior approved, on October 12th. And this is for their meeting November the 12th through the 16th in Biloxi.
Had to be here to get money back, right?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve?
Where did we approve all that?
We did, and it was for us to send them. We were going to write a check to a hotel, but they found a different accommodation, actually a condo, that is actually $1,000 cheaper than what it would have cost for the week. But Judy has the credit card, so she'll be the one.
Okay. Make motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Sullivan's not here, so I'll let you have it, Ms. Oster.
All right. First item is authority to pay registration fees in the amount of $155 for John Sullivan to attend the USPAP update course and for continuing education on November 16th in Biloxi, pay lodging in the amount of $94 for one night, November 15th and 16th, and pay any travel-related expenses.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop?
I may not vote for that.
All right, well, that takes all three of us to make something happen, so.
Okay, I'll say it.
Question?
I'll say it.
Huh?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. B, Ms. Oster.
Petitions for change of assessment for the 2018 real and personal property assessment rule.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. And C, please, ma'am.
Petition to adjust 2018 homestead exemption supplemental rule.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Harrison is on vacation this week, so you're up to game, Ms. Oster.
I'm making a motion to approve roadwork accomplished and roadwork scheduled.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve Mr. Harrison's segment A on roadwork. Second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have three items on the agenda. First one is authority to advertise for bids for the construction of the Andrew Jackson Circle Improvement.
Where is Andrew Jackson again? Is that off Andrew Chapel?
No, that's down, no, I'm making a motion to approve it. But what it is, Bob, that's the air gas kind of project. The air gas is picking up, but it's, it's the, the road, it's in Star. It's the road that they're going to connect out. It's really a good thing right now that Andrew Jackson is kind of basically blocked in if there's an accident or something. Air Gas is, we took a long time, but they've worked it out and worked with us, and we're changing up several things. Also in that, just so people that may be wondering or know, in this same project, the MDOT, as well as the railroad are involved, and they're going to be crossing bars and lights, put up the railroad tracks at Laughlin Road in Star. There'll be also a new entrance coming into Air Gas that also will have crossing bars and lights, which will be, make that much safer. All of you that have lived in that area know that accidents and how serious that is sometimes. And what happens when something happens there, the railroad track is completely was blocked, the people from Andrew Jackson to even be able to get out of their homes at one time, out of where they are. So, one time, there was a wreck, and actually, they were having to crawl under the train. It was on a Wednesday night, crawling under the train to get to the house.
I'm curious, is there going to be some type of fine given to the drivers of these trucks if they go that route in the future?
Basically, the way it is, they were, it's almost impossible to make a turn into it. But yes, they're not, this is not an air gas route. And I understand what you're saying. It'll be addressed, I'm not sure what we can do, but it, this is definitely no air gas route. It's going to be hard for them to make that turn when they do this, Jay, because when it comes out, it's going to come out right at the railroad, and it's going to be, be hard for them to make a turn of that truck.
I mean, we stick for all this money, and then they still end up doing the same thing.
No, they're gonna, it's going to be for strictly residential and, you know, your UPS and normal, that we all would have, but not air gas truck. We'll, we'll address that. We basically have addressed it, but I don't know what the.
Well, we could just put no, no trucks.
Right. Well, yeah, but it's going to have to still be able to be delivery trucks to get in there.
Those are exempt.
Huh? Yeah. Well, it, that, you're right, it'd be no trucks, and they're not planning on that. They'll, but it's, it's a good thing for the community, for everything, and, and air gas is, has been worked well, and it's picking up quite a bit of the.
Yes.
Funding. So, anyway.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve.
Say it.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. B, sir.
Well, I may, phase three, approval of the preliminary plat. And Steve, this is in his district, and he is in favor of the project, so I would recommend approval of that preliminary plat.
Make motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Leesburg Estates, Part One, this is approval of the final plat, and Mr. Gaines is in favor of this project, too.
Make, make motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Slay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Mr. President, do we want to take these hearings as one motion, A, B, and C?
Yes, all three is fine.
Okay. These are to set hearings on the 15th of November at 9:00 a.m. Jeff Sebold, Roy Nichols, and the dimensional variance is associated with Andrew Chapel that's being brought by the county.
There a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
Yes, under the public hearing section, my, my part of the agenda, we have, the first item is a public hearing on the Mike Zatoni Incorporated rezoning request associated with Highway 468 South.
469.
It should be 469.
Yes.
That's correct.
Right.
If I may, we will, we will open that public hearing. Mr. Zatoni is seeking to rezone a 77.67 acre parcel on Highway 469 South from its current designation of A1 to RE1. He is planning to subdivide the property into three lots that contain 25.89 acres each. All three lots will have frontage on the public road. We have before us a letter that has been received, and I am asking the Board to make it a part of the permanent record of this hearing from individuals. It looks to me like there are a number of signatures here, some of which our husband and wife appears to me, and so it totals up to, it looks somewhere between 10 and 15 total signatures, and they are asking that if the Board is, is intending to rezone this property to RE1, that it do so, that it do so conditionally, and that it do so with the following conditions, and that is that the full acreage, the 77.67 acres, not be divided more than the three parcels, that that is it, that there be no further subdividing of these parcels beyond the three that are proposed, and that each of the 25 acre parcels be limited to one dwelling per parcel, and that there be no changes made to the zoning without some sort of notification to the individuals who have affixed their signatures to this letter. And so they would ask that that be the consideration. I believe that I have stated that accurately. I know that we have a number of individuals here who are interested in this. And so we would receive that information. It's now in the record officially, and, and they have asked it be a part of the consideration. I will ask if Mr. Zatoni, or anyone on behalf of Mr. Zatoni, is here. Don't see him. So, gentlemen, I don't, I don't see Mr. Zatoni to speak on the matter. My assumption would be that the three lots, the restriction, the conditional rezoning would be acceptable, along with the restriction on the three lots and no further subdividing. I would assume that that would be acceptable to him. He's not here to speak on the matter. So, unless the Board has questions, we will close that public hearing.
I make a motion to approve, under the conditions that you have stated.
Okay.
I will say he had, when we had a meeting with him back several months ago.
Yes.
A month, about six weeks or so ago, he was in agreeance to three lots. So, I don't think it's going to be any surprise to him. And under these conditions, I, I make the motion to approve.
77, 77 acreage is a big chunk of land, not to subdivide again.
Right. Well.
It wasn't our idea. He came to us with the 25.89 acre lots.
Right. And where, where it's located, that's where it needs to stay. That's where it needs to be.
That's, out of.
It's, it's.
Out of curiosity.
It's commercial, and we're going residential, is it not?
It's, it's A1.
Oh, it's A1?
Yeah.
Okay. Never mind, forget it.
Out of curiosity, let's just say 10 years, not 15 years, to mark it down, there are changes, and everybody's in agreement that do something else. What would it entail for Mr. Zatoni, or whoever the current owners, to unwind this? Is there a provision there to make it a little bit simpler, assuming everyone's in a group?
They would come.
It's, it's another petition to rezone at that time, Bob. It would just simply be a petition to rezone. The argument would be that the material change in circumstances over that time period.
Right.
I think, I think what's being reflected in reality here now is that there has not been such a change in the, a material change in the condition of the neighborhood to, to potentially justify it going to RE1. We find ourselves in this trick bag of a subdivision not being allowed in A1, and so he's, he's not intending, according to what he tells us, he's not intending to create a subdivision as we appreciate subdivisions, as we typically define subdivision. But the three-lot maneuver triggers the subdivision regulations. So, it's kind of a difficult situation we find ourselves in with respect to zoning. And so, in order for him to qualify for the rezoning, he is, he is apparently agreeing to keep this in a rural setting with very large lots.
Fair enough. Motion by Mr. Morris, and second by myself, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. E, please, sir.
Yes, to the extent that I didn't close that public hearing, it's closed. The next item under the Section E is a public hearing on the Entergy Mississippi Conditional Use Permit, 6021 Henderson Road. This is District Five. Request, Entergy Mississippi Incorporated is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 230 kilovolt electrical substation at 6021 Henderson Road. Their system is overburdened, and the new substation will improve their existing service and allow room for future growth. Entergy owns two parcels that together total 5.601 acres, and the property is zoned RE1A. At this time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Entergy Mississippi E Conditional Use Permit. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. On that matter, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Y'all got the email about the erosion this morning? One of the homeowners out there, joint landowners out there sent an email with about six.
I get that.
That, that was separate.
Huh? That's, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
All right, next item under the agenda is Item F, Public Hearing on the Gregory Crane Conditional Use Permit. This is 443 Jim's Road. This is a District Four parcel. Mr. Crane is seeking a conditional use permit to mine no more than two acres at 443 Jim's Road. He's digging a one and a half acre pond for property owners there. He will be hauling dirt out of the house pad, out for house pads in the county. It's a 22.84 acre parcel zoned A2, and we received a copy of the DEQ Notice of Exempt Operation application. This time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Gregory Crane Conditional Use Permit request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Let me ask you on that. If they, it says one and a half, if they, or two acre, would this fall, still follow under the four acre exemption if they wanted to enlarge it some?
It would if it's less than four acres.
Huh?
If it's less than four acres.
Yeah, I mean, so if they, I'm just getting at, if he wanted, you know, two and a half acres or three, it wouldn't be a problem.
I would suggest that if there's any material change at all in what has been approved by DEQ, that we would halt things on our side until you go back to DEQ and make sure that they're still comfortable that it is an exempt mine operation. That would be the way that we would handle that.
Okay.
That would be my request, my suggestion, as, as to how we handle it.
Well, okay. Does that answer, the couple that owns the lands here, does that answer your question? You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
I talked, I spoke to them while we were having a little break before the meeting. Had a chance to speak to them. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Yeah, you're welcome. Glad to help.
Anyway, so you're okay with, you understand that part? Okay.
It doesn't need to go beyond the two acres that DEQ's aware of. Thank you. All right?
All right.
Is that what the motion is? All right.
You want to close it? Do you close it?
If I didn't, I'm closing it now.
Okay. You make the motion.
I make the motion to approve. I'm assuming, I'm assuming, uh.
Steve?
There's been no, Steve's got no problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
Item G is a public hearing on the Dixie Doll Conditional Use Permit, 125 McKay Hill Drive, District Four parcel. Dixie Doll is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a dog grooming business at 125 McKay Hill Drive. Miss Doll is purchasing the property and plans to enclose a portion of the existing covered patio for the dog grooming business. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. She has contacted neighbors in the area and has not received opposition. I assume that's still the case. This is a 1.70 acre parcel that is zoned RE1. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Dixie Doll Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Renee, that conditional use doesn't also expand into boarding animals. This is strictly for hair grooming dogs. Because I, I've been involved in a situation where it was pretty successful on the hair grooming, and they decided to start boarding animals, too.
I have one question. I know that it's probably outside of our purview, but is it possible that we require them to carry insurance?
I don't think that's, typically, that's not one of the conditions.
That's not what we can do.
No, sir.
I mean, they can always come back and ask for the boarding part, but I just don't want to make that an automatic inclusion, to make sure we clarify that's not, you know, because marking dogs do have a chance to change people's minds.
Before we know about that. Yeah.
All right. You closed it, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
I'm assuming Steve didn't have any problem with this. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by myself, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Onto other, please.
Yes, sir. Under, under other Item H, this is, this is really just a cleanup of, or a further part of the process that is already underway. The Board has already entertained a public hearing on the expansion of our solid waste management plan. This is related to the Mount Helms Rubbish Permit, the expansion of that by the 20 acre parcel. The Board's already convened a hearing. This is simply to adopt a resolution that allows for that amendment to be added to our solid waste management plan. It's a further part of the process, and so you're being asked to approve a resolution that amends our solid waste management plan to add this additional 20 acre piece into the Mount Helms Rubbish Permit.
Make a, I make a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
This is a resolution that we put before the Board at this time in every Board term. We're coming into an election year. We have some ongoing highway road improvement projects. There is a statute that prohibits a Board from, from entertaining contracts that are likely to exceed beyond 30 days beyond their, their potential Board term. And so we, every time we get into this, we list out all of our road projects that we think may go 30 days past y'all's Board term in terms of activity or construction or whatever. We, we just, we do this out in an abundance of caution. Otherwise, you're prohibited from entering into those agreements with respect to your road projects. So, we have a resolution. It's in the packet for you. You can see the roads that are listed there. We try to be as inclusive as possible in our roads there, some of which may or may not see the light of day necessarily, but they're there in the event things line up for us, okay?
Where do we have this?
Y'all want to look at the, y'all want to look at, at the road projects that are listed there, just to be sure?
Yeah, just a, one quick second. Is that going on? Okay. Do you need to read these to y'all, or y'all got one?
I have that one, dude.
No.
We have Gunner Road, Andrew Chapel, North Shore Parkway, Spillway Widening.
Motion to approve.
Andrew Chapel, Lawrence Baum, Spillway Road, Spillway Road, Grantford, Andrew Jackson Circle, Butler Road, and any circle improvement. Only one I'm looking here, I don't see, and I don't know if it pertains Mr. Slay and Mr. Parker, is maybe the Monterey Correction. Is that, that Monterey and, and Butler Road, is that in there?
Botler's on here.
Is that what, that's the one it refers to?
Botler Road and.
Botler Road, Monterey, Thomasville.
If I just kept reading, I'd have gotten there. Okay.
I'll second.
Second, motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Onward, Mr. Slay.
So that it's clear before we leave that one, that resolution does not obligate this Board to do anything. It simply pulls those projects out. We're going to have to ask the state legislature to give a local and private that approves this and allows these projects to be capable of being started. Does that make sense? You're not obligating yourself to anything. You're just pulling them out of the restricted category.
Right.
And put them in, into the we-can-do-this category if we want to. All right?
Yep.
Item J is the approval to accept a proposal that has been submitted by the, by a vendor called LLD Contractors, Inc., to demolish and clean up the property that is at 161 Luann Street in Triangle Acres. You see the PPI in there, in the amount of $2,250. The lien, a lien is to be placed on the property and collected as taxes for this cleanup cost. This is a dilapidated situation where we have made every effort that we can think of to obligate the owner to do something. We're not getting anywhere, and this is the cheapest cost that we believe we can get this done for.
And they are actually paying the taxes. Correct?
Somebody is.
Yeah, I mean, somebody is, so we'll have, it's not like some of the others that we're stuck with, or could be stuck with. Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve. Second by myself, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Slay, can you still, or not?
Actually, we made a command decision not to discuss what we said we were going to discuss today, which is our heavy haul ordinance. We're not going to discuss that. We don't have everybody here. So, we're going, we're going to tender that to a later date.
Not to kid it.
Well, we're going to keep, we're going to keep pushing that to a later date.
All right, Ms. Oster, let's let it back to your turn.
First item I have is, this is pay application number 16 to Chris Albright and Construction Company on our new courthouse facility in the amount of $420,214.92.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. B, please, ma'am.
This is on the Rankin County Misdemeanor Facility, and it's pay application number nine to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of $184,013.20, and authority to issue that check.[1566.16]
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, motion carries, C, please ma'am.
Request approval of change proposal for the new misdemeanor facility. It's change order number fourteen to furnish and install Wi-Fi Raceway in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, motion carries, D, please ma'am.
Request approval of two thousand and eighteen certification for authority to expend one nil, um, funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, motion approved. Uh, anything for additional business on the board?
I, I have one thing, one thing, I just wanna make you all, you all aware. Uh, I got a phone call, um, Mr. Parker's aware of it too, I think, uh, from a Murray Stewart, which was MDOT, he's with the MDOT safety, um, side of it. And they have, they look at roads that, uh, and somehow they, they keep up this data and they know, know it. But Cleary Road, uh, Monterey Road and Shallow Road are, um, show these lists of accidents. Uh, Shallows are like fifty, Monterey's the worst at one twenty-three, Cleary is sixty-plus. And the real curbed roads, where there's a program that they offer that we can, where they provide all the signs to do signage on the roads, um, we just have to install them. And they, I don't know how they come up with where they are, but this has to do with the number of wrecks and accidents that have been on there. I think they, he told me they had tried to do this one time before and I think, uh, the, uh, anyway, it wasn't accepted. Uh, but anyways, just something I was gonna put out there that, you know, it's, the only prob- only thing we would have is, uh, the burden of putting up a bunch of signs. So, but...
What part of Monterey were they referring to?
Uh...
They're not talking about just Monterey, it's got the whole county. There's lots of section of the county that they were referring to that we didn't have a need.
He just called me and told, it wasn't, and these aren't all in my district, the Shallow Road, Cleary, he said Cleary Road is the south end of Cleary Road. So, I don't know, I'm just passing, I'm the messenger, passing this on what was said.
I thought we approved this last time I brought it up and I told them to give them a call and see what they could do.
Seems like I remember hearing about this at some point several months ago.
I, I don't know, the first...
Chevron's and curves primarily.
Well, okay, the what, I'm just wondering, I mean, he just said it was a, uh, he said they all weren't interested in doing it. So, that.
These mostly Chevron's, yeah?
It's Chevron signs, it's, uh, curve ahead signs, it's, uh, just those type.
Murray Stewart, they used to be our state agent. That is primarily his job.
Dot is to go out into, uh, say quote unquote, the rural areas and look at situations that might be dangerous or familiar, but he had called me about it a couple of weeks ago and said this is kinda what, uh, his study had brought forth and wanted to know if Rink Rankin County would be interested. And I said, yes, you know, it needs to come to the county. They don't wanna do it, they don't, and they're not, the county's not forced to do anything.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it, just I guess maybe just gotta delineate where they wanna put them, you know?
I just don't remember them not being willing to put the signs up before, that was a new wrinkle.
Yeah, that wasn't, um, he said that was one reason, they all didn't wanna do it. And he even said it may even be that you need a, a sign driver, a post driver more than just a manual one, because he's talking about quite a volume of signs.
Yeah. My, my assumption would be the continuing maintenance obligation.
Oh, yeah.
Once it's funded and the signs are installed.
And it becomes, uh...
And it becomes the county's responsibility to, uh, to maintain.
Oh, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. Uh, like I said, I'm just putting, I told him I would, I appreciate him calling and I would, uh, bring to the board to, uh...
Yeah, maybe we'll pick out a couple of areas that seem to be the most...
Well, you know, and I'm not sure, I, I did ask this though, Craig, I'm not sure whether you can do a couple of areas, let's just say a road. I'm not sure if you can pick the spots on that road. It may just require whatever they think.
Yes.
Cause he, he could identify, he's pretty clear on the curves, he has the inside, like he's driven them and the areas.
He has, he has driven them.
Yeah, so I don't know if you could, uh, you know, you could kinda handpick where you wanna put them.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure. I know Monterey, that's a whole nother deal too, but we've got to, it's a problem, it's gotta have some s- some stripes on it.
Why don't we...
So the signage may help.
Follow up with Mr. Stewart and, and get a little more clarity and some details.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
About that maintenance piece and, uh, and then just follow back over there.
Yeah, that's fine, I just, I just wanted to bring it up so you'd be aware. Yeah, that's fine, we'll, uh, maybe, uh, maybe some Tim and them, y'all need to, Mr. Parker, y'all need to hand, talk to him and see.
Yes, sir, I'll be there, too.
Okay, alright. And another question I had, and I keep, I'm being asked this, what's the update on the, um, uh, completion of the courthouse? And, I mean, is any, anybody tell anything on that?
April ninth is what was last Carl said, that's wasn't it?
That ain't gonna happen.
I don't say ain't gonna happen either.
No. And we're not, um, I know they've asked for some extensions.
They had, they actually have not asked for an additional extension. Carl has telegraphed to us that it's coming.
Well, I'm not...
They haven't made a formal request.
I'm not on board with that one.
Yeah, so they, they made a request and this board granted it, that extended it to the April...
That's right.